We're good.
Okay. Good evening, everyone. This is Chris Hanky, our superintendent of schools. We're here tonight on our town hall to talk about a return to in-person learning. So, excuse me just a second, please. I apologize. I have a technical difficulty. I had two different things going on on some windows. We're here to talk about the hybrid model that's going to be the in-person learning model. This town hall is geared toward parents to help them understand what we're doing and where we're coming from. As I said in my reminder, you can email questions to G Wilson at GH Bulldogs.org. And you can also type into the chat for YouTube. I do want to start off just by saying that we took a look at where things were with area districts, with equity in mind in terms of our students' opportunities. I also polled the first three districts, or the districts that are around us and around Cleveland. All but Cleveland are looking to go back, most by the end of this month, and the rest sometime in the first week or so of February, in either a hybrid or a full model. Many of the suburban, outer suburban districts are back either in hybrid or full. And we believe we're taking, what we're doing is we are taking a calculated risk with equity in mind to have our children attend school. I should also, quite frankly, point out who else is on this with me that I apologize. We have Gina Wilson, who's our family engagement coordinator. If you could wave when I introduce you. Excuse me, Al Saluka, our director of business services treasurer. Yolanda Hamilton, our diversity, equity, inclusion consultant. Brooke Pilitz, our director of special education. Sean Patton, our assistant superintendent. And last but certainly not least, Lisa Miller, who is my assistant. And she's helping us tonight. So with that-
Don't forget Leanne up there in the right-hand corner of the-
I didn't, see, I almost forgot Mrs. Rysland. Leanne Rysland, our director of teaching and learning. So with that, we will start to go through some of the questions. And I guess if nobody minds, I'll moderate a bit here. And anybody pick up if I leave something out. First question we have is, does my child automatically get to return to school even if enrolled in the Bulldog Digital Academy? Or go opt out of virtual learning for him to return to the hybrid model? If so, how is this done? Mrs. Rysland, do you want to take that one real quick?
You do have to opt out of the BDA. We had an opt-out form in December, right before we left for Christmas break. At this point, if you'd like to opt out of the BDA, you can email Mrs. Morris, the BDA principal. If you are in the high school, you can email Mr. Townsend. He's one of the assistant principals at the high school, and he's been handling the enrollment for BDA. You can also call either one of these people as well.
Thank you. Um. Another question, Mr. Saluka, because I think this is probably a pretty important one. Could you kind of go over transportation, how that will work in the hybrid model?
Yeah, absolutely, Mr. Hanky. Thank you. Transportation will look a little bit different in that we will only be transporting, even though our buses are currently set up to transport two per seat, that 54 passenger, right now, transportation is looking at limiting one per seat. And the seating would be window aisle, window aisle, every other seat. So what does that mean? Our capacity, our buses are now 27 students. Window aisle, there would not be a first row right behind the driver for driver safety. And that way, we can keep up most of the routes the same. But unfortunately, that limited capacity limits the number of buses we can put in service and still meet our school times. These buses will be going to all the schools if you have transportation now, with the exception, and I apologize for that, with the exception of anybody that had busing that lived in between 1.5 miles and two miles last year. If you are below the two-mile limit, you will not be receiving busing. Unfortunately, we cannot meet the safety standards and still transport all of those students. My suggestion right now is for our transportation department to get out those bus routes. You will see those probably the beginning of next week. We will also be sending letters to those families we've identified that had busing last year and will no longer have busing this year. Right now, I've identified 35 students. Unfortunately, if we have more buses and more drivers, we would be able to accommodate. But right now, our capacity is limited to that. Keep in mind that we'll be running two routes. We'll be starting a middle school route first, and then we'll be running, we will be running the elementary route second. In between the runs, we will be sanitizing our buses. Also, I need to remind parents, we will not be taking temperatures before you get on the bus. Unfortunately, due to the timing of our school start times, we will not have the time to check temperatures of students before they get on the bus. So we are asking parents to self-check their students if they're riding a bus before they leave their house and before they get on the bus. That leads, I guess, into my next thing, Mr. Hanky, if you don't mind me expounding a little bit. We will be taking every student's temperature at the building. We will be doing it in two ways. We have thermal imagers, and we will have the touchless thermometers. So your child will have their temperature taken at the building. That, once again, I'd like to reiterate, please, that does not diminish the importance of having your child self-check before they leave their house. So, you know, I want to, you know, that's very important. If your child is sick or showing any symptoms, please, please, please do not send them to school.
And I'd like to say, Mr. Saluka, they come over and a question about in, you know, some households might not have a thermometer or, but there are many symptoms of COVID as we've described, you know, in terms of things. We will also check temperatures at the school. But I think for everyone's safety, we all just need to err on the side of caution. You know, as a parent, if you believe there's a fever, it's better to keep your child at home.
Well, even that, even if it's not COVID, Mr. Hanky, I think the biggest thing, if your child is sick, flu-like symptoms, a cold, fever, congestion, please err on the side of caution and keep your student home.
Next, I'm just kind of going down some questions that are coming in, Mrs. Wilson. As I said at the top, you know, why are we pushing for a return to in-person learning? First of all, looking at surrounding districts, it looks like most students, if not all, except for possibly Cleveland Municipal, are going to have the opportunity to learn in person, most of them by the end of this month. We believe that our students should have the same opportunity. And secondly, we believe we can do so safely. I do want to share, and hopefully, this kind of illustrates what we mean by, what one piece of the hybrid model is here is that we have a much lower student population coming into the buildings. So, for example, what I put here, if you can see my cursor, is kind of our approximate capacities of each of our buildings, and how many students are going to be there during any hybrid day. So, for example, Maple Leaf's full population is approximately 600 students, and they will have 225 students on any given day. William Foster's capacity is approximately 700 students, and they will have 200 students per day. Elmwood's capacity, it's the smallest of our buildings, is 300, and they will have 100 students per day. And the middle school, 850. In fact, when I was principal there, we were up to 1,000 students, and they will have 300 students per day. High school's capacity, what it was built for was about 1,200 students, and they will have 460 per day. And this chart kind of illustrates in the blue what our capacities are and the number of students that will actually be in the buildings. Beyond the hybrid model in terms of instruction, this hybrid also offers us an opportunity to be safe in terms of social distancing and sanitation. And that does bring me to some other things that are put in the chat here. You know, and I'll go to Mr. Patton on this. What happens to my child's learning if the teacher is out for a lengthy period of time?
So, we have, we have two plans in place, and everything will be actually handled by case-by-case basis. So we will determine where or the late the time that a staff member may be out, where we may have to have those students warm remotely. We've also contacted our sub-company, which is called Red Hill. They will have building subs that will be in the buildings, starting on the 25th. And they've also reached out to the company as well as ensuring that other certified substitutes will be able to come into the buildings. So each one of the cases are going to be handled a little bit differently. But again, it will be handled by case-by-case basis, and those determinations will be delivered out by, from us as well as the school administrators.
Very good. I appreciate that. Mrs. Rysland, can you, there's just general questions about the Bulldog Digital Academy. On the, at the board meeting on Monday, I said that one of our indicators will be if we are able to return our Bulldog Digital Academy numbers. That is a piece of it. And also, you know, they're asking, in terms of the BDA, if they opt for it, what will, that situation look like?
So, right now, well, when we first started the school year and we offered the BDA, we asked families to join for a semester commitment. So that would be the first and second quarter, and then the third and the fourth quarter. And we are approaching that third quarter right now. So we're heading in, we're wrapping up that first semester, heading into the second. So we've posted this week the option to opt into the Bulldog Academy for the second semester. And just like we said at the beginning of the year, it is a semester commitment because we do have to staff it. And we have to make sure that, you know, we, our goal, once kids are enrolled and they start to build relationships and build community within their remote setting, that we can kind of maintain that. So that's why we're asking for that semester agreement. So the second semester is approaching. The opt-in is on the district website. It's also in all of our social media channels. And I believe the principals sent out remind messages where you can just follow the link. It's a real quick Google survey, and you can opt in that way. There are some people who are still trying to come out so that they can return to in-person learning. And as I said a few minutes ago, feel free to email Mrs. Morris. She's the BDA administrator for K to eight, or Mr. Townsend, who's the BDA administrator for nine through 12. And we can go ahead and opt you out if you're looking to do that. With the BDA, it is, it's organized slightly differently than in-person learning. And the teachers are doing like a blended learning, you know, type of platform. They're working with kids. They're meeting with kids in large groups. They're meeting with kids in small groups. They have kids doing different activities through Google Classroom. So if you sign up for the BDA now, you will have different teachers. And I see there's a couple of questions about that in the chat. You will have different teachers because we have these teachers assigned to the BDA. At the high school level, it's a tad bit different because we've got a whole bunch of teachers teaching various periods of BDA. You could potentially get lucky and have your same teacher. For example, if you had Ms. Milosevic for algebra, you were working with her remotely, you sign up for the BDA, you could potentially have her again, just in a different period. So schedules will change. Teachers probably will change. And of course, your classmates would change at this point, simply because it's the halfway point. For a lot of kids in middle school and high school, schedules change at the semester anyway because you have semester classes. So you're going to be getting new teachers and new kids to be working with anyway. So for some people, that's a concern. Other people, they don't mind. Either way, that's sort of how that plays out.
Okay, a couple of things I've seen come down the track, come down the, come down the chat here. Several school districts have attempted to return to traditional in-person learning. However, the numbers of positive cases has risen after this has happened. Why are we not waiting until the pandemic settles? We, I want to reiterate, we believe that, you know, we have a safe plan. However, if there is an issue that happens with infection in a classroom at a school, first of all, you'd be very well informed. Not only, there will be letters that will be sent out by email if there is an infection at the school, even if it's brought into the school, and if it is in a specific classroom or classrooms, those folks will receive a separate letter. If there is a major infection issue at a school, we will have to pivot and go back to online learning. So, Mr. Patton, am I missing anything there? Mr. Patton handles a lot of our reporting to the county board of health.
No, we continue to continue to work closely with the county board of health and continue to, well, as cases become available and questions and concerns, they've been fantastic with us and in working with us, as well as providing us insight and information. So as cases or if something should come arise, we would definitely reach out to them, use their guidance to help us make informed decisions, and then forming out that information out to our families as well as our schools. And again, everything is continued to be through the guidance that they say is a case-by-case basis, and that we will continue to use that guidance as we proceed for welcoming our students back in the buildings.
Question, Mrs. Rysland, about hybrid, what that may look like during the in-person days versus the days where there's asynchronous learning?
Yeah, I see that. You know what? Before I address that, I just want to briefly talk about the hybrid, sort of how it's set up. So the hybrid schedule is a two-day-on, two-day-off type of formula. There's a couple of different models for hybrids. And this particular two-on, two-off will hopefully keep kids in a little bit of a routine. It is, your child will be assigned to a cohort, and we're calling them Group A, Group B. The Group A students will come to school on Mondays and Tuesdays. The Group B students will come to school on Thursdays and Fridays. When they're not personally in the building, they're going to be at home doing asynchronous work. Now, asynchronous work can take many forms. And Mr. Hanky talked about this a little bit at the board meeting on Monday. If you had the chance to watch it, this is going to be, you're going to hear this again. But asynchronous work can look a lot of different ways. It is a teacher posting content via Google Classroom, and your child logging in and completing the work. It could be a reading. It could be a video. It could be, you know, reading something and answering some questions. They could be completing a writing assignment. They could be working with other students. They don't necessarily have to be alone or working independently. They could, you know, Zoom with other students. They could be collaborating on a project. They could be completing a lab for science class. There are quite a few activities that students can complete on their own in an asynchronous learning environment. When they're in the building, of course, we want them to make the most of their time. So like watching a video, you know, we post a lot of videos, very educational, very helpful for students to see, you know, different things happening. It would probably be best while we're in the building to not be watching a 13-minute video. We're only going to be together for two days a week. I want to spend, you know, all that FaceTime, talking, working with kids, you know, having the opportunity to make sure that they're on track and that they're getting what they need. They can watch the video on the asynchronous days. So there's going to be a little bit of like a mindset change for kids and when they're in and out of the classroom. Some of the things that they're going to be asked to do independently, they may have been used to doing it in the classroom with more like facilitation from the teacher. So when they come in, let's just say it's a Group A kid. They'll come into school, they'll report in on Mondays, they'll report in on Tuesdays. Wednesdays, we're going to change the name of Wednesdays. We're going to call them Workshop Wednesdays because I don't want people to think, sometimes I know people feel like maybe the current asynchronous Wednesday doesn't provide students with a great deal of work. And that's because we've been using it sort of as a no-no instruction day or a reset day, where teachers may just be Zooming with small groups of kids or students who maybe are missing multiple assignments have the opportunity to work through some of them and kind of get caught up. The asynchronous days in a hybrid schedule will look different than that. There will be more content. Research suggests that students should work for three to four hours asynchronously each day. So that would be kind of our target goal for students, that we would be posting three to four hours of content for them to work through. It may take them longer. They may be working actually for six hours. Or they may break it up and work for a couple of hours in the morning, take a little break, work for a couple of hours in the afternoon. Or as some of our teachers are finding with our high school kids, they're working from, you know, 7:30 at night until 11:30. Whatever suits their particular, you know, dynamic, that's fine. But as they're working through those assignments, then they would complete this work and come back in on Monday and Tuesday, and the teachers would be able to kind of like debrief with them. So really, those asynchronous days are very important to what's happening in person as well.
Whoops, sorry. Family groups. We've had a couple of questions about family groups and how that may look in the hybrid model. This is Rysland.
So family groups, we have identified them all. And we have developed a little system of keeping family groups together. So when we first announced the hybrid plan back in the fall, we talked about a loose division on alphabet. So the Group A kids are like an A to K last name, and the Group B kids' last names are like L to Z. It's a very loose division. It was a starting point for us, and it was like our first run-through. Then we decided, okay, let's sort of look at family groups. We have, you know, diverse families with different situations. And we took a look at those family groups, and we kind of combined them into one particular group. So if you have, you know, if my child's last name is Rysland, and I am currently fostering somebody whose last name is Davis, and Davis is in second grade, and Rysland is in ninth grade, we defaulted to the youngest student and put them then in Group A. We did that for several reasons, obviously, to keep the sanity of the family. I'm a mom, and if I had to keep track of multiple school days, that would be a nightmare. We also did it for the purpose of transportation. Obviously, you know, we want kids transported together and going out to the various buildings and having all their school activities completed at the same time. We also took into account that there are situations where we've got high school students who are at home watching younger students at the same time and going through school. And we felt that it was essential that, you know, the older sibling was there with the younger sibling at home. So that was sort of how we came with the family groups and why we decided to do them that way. They are done. You should be getting information about your family groups next week. Everybody will get their cohort days next week. As you know, I'm sure you've heard, the US Mail is an eight-mare email. So we're trying to get everything out so that you have ample time to sort of get the information and plan appropriately. And our principals are working really hard this week to get that all done. Now, just a little disclaimer. You know, human error, of course, always the potential for human error. So if you get two letters and your children are accidentally on different days, please call the principal and let them know, and we'll make the change right away.
Very good. Thank you, Mrs. Rysland. Just going through here. Looks like the busing process, again, Mrs. Hamilton, looks like it came up again. Is that correct?
Yes, that's correct. A parent in the YouTube chat was just asking for clarification. And I know Mr. Saluka spoke to that in terms of busing. If you could just, you know-
Yeah, let's, yeah, review one more time. First of all, in getting back to what I originally said, we are, I want to have the bus routes up on our website by Tuesday, next Tuesday, so people will know where their bus stops are. I also want to reiterate again that we are, we moved to the two-mile limit only because we do not have, since our bus capacity has been cut in half, we do not have the number of buses and drivers available to transport with the same numbers. So we needed to move out the two-mile limit. If you were getting bused last year and you live within two miles of your school, you'll be receiving a letter saying that this year you will not be eligible for transportation. If something changes, we will notify you of that change. As far as our buses, we are limiting our bus capacity to 27 per bus. That's one per seat. And it's aisle, window, aisle, window, every other row. So you're not sitting directly behind or directly in front of the other person. This, we will not be able to take temperatures at the bus stop. So I'd like to reiterate to parents, please, pre-check your child at home. We're also mandating masks on our buses as we are in school. So please ensure that your child has a mask before they get on our bus. I know that's not always the case. A mask breaks, something happens. We will have PPE supplies on the bus. So we will not be sending your child back home unless they conveniently forget it every day. So, but we ask your cooperation in keeping your student and the other students safe. We will be running two runs. We run the middle school first, and then we come back around and get the elementary school students. In between those runs, we will be sanitizing our buses. So if the middle school gets on, we will be back sanitizing the bus, and then we will come back around to pick up the elementary school, trying to keep our riders safe at all times. We will not be having a student sit behind our driver to keep our driver safe and out of, out of having somebody right behind them. Once again, I'd like to reiterate, unfortunately, we needed to move out to the two-mile limit. We will have the buses up on our website early next week. If you have any questions, please contact our transportation supervisor, and they will be able to fill you in. Or you can email myself at asluke@ghbulldogs.org, and we will get back to you on any transportation or concerns that you may have.
Another safety issue I think that's come up, and it might be in your wheelhouse, Al, about lunch and where that's taking place and how it's taking place.
Yes, that's another good question. Lunch will be taking place in the elementary schools. Let's start with breakfast. For those hybrid students that are coming in, the first thing you will do, you'll be coming into the building. You will have your temperature taken, and then you will be grabbing your breakfast and taking it right to your classroom to eat. As for the lunch, you will be eating lunch in your classroom. You will have, be able to go out of your classroom. Lunch will be available at Carts, close to your classroom. You will be going out, getting a lunch, taking it back to your classroom to eat. For the middle school, breakfast, you'll be coming into the building. You'll grab your breakfast, take your temperature, grab your breakfast, go to your classroom and eat. For the lunch, you will be going down to the cafeteria, grabbing your lunch, and then walking back to your classroom. There will be no eating in our cafeteria to maintain social distancing. For the lunch, you will be going down to the cafeteria, grabbing your lunch and then walking back to your classroom. There will be no eating in our cafeteria to maintain social distancing. And it also is to self-contained students with their, I guess you call it Mrs. Rysland, their pod or their groups. So you, you know, in, in your pod that you're around the same, uh, circle of, uh, students. For the high school. Breakfast, the same way you come in the building, grab your breakfast. For lunch, um, since it is a massive building, what we are doing is we are dividing up the eating areas. So you grab your lunch and you'll be sent to one of the designated eating areas where there will be socially distant, um. Places for you to eat. So we're not going to put everybody in the cafeteria. We will ensure that there is, uh, social distancing during their lunch period. And the reason they can't go back to their classroom is because we changed classes at the high school. And those classrooms will be in use during, uh, everyone's lunch period. As far as for. Delivering students, um, breakfast and lunch, if you're in the BDA, we will have a meal pickup. And if you're on the hybrid, we will also have a meal pickup. Uh, we have identified Wednesdays as the meal pickup for the BDA and the hybrid. And on Wednesdays, we will be providing, if you're in the hybrid, meals for three days. And if you're in a BDA, meal for five days. Um, we will get more information out of where you'll be picking those up. If you're the BDA, we're going to make it one location. We're going to make it to high school. If you're in the hybrid, you will be picking up meals at your child's individual building. Um, we think this is the best way to go is, uh, for the hybrid, uh, a five day meal. And that way you don't have to come out more than once. And for the hybrid, a three day meal. And the reason it's only three days is because your child will be fed for the two days they're in school.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Saluka.
Yes.
Um. Uh, uh. We have a, a special education question, Mrs. Pillitz, and, and probably will help us kind of expound upon our efforts there anyway. Uh, if I have a child with speech issues and teachers and classmates are unable to understand, how will that be handled? I guess generally too about special education in the hybrid model would be appropriate this time.
Okay. So if you're concerned about your child and, and their, their speech concerns, um, since we're starting the second semester. I am assuming that your teacher is aware of your child's concerns as, as far as speech goes. So please. Speak with your, um, teacher that your child has and let them know of your, your speech concerns. And also if you do not, if you're not able to reach a teacher, please, uh, reach out to the principal. Um, and finally, if, if you still have questions, you can always contact me at the board office or my email, B Pillitz at GH Bulldogs dot org.
Yes, go ahead. Go ahead.
As far as the hybrid schedule for our students with disabilities, they will be following. The same schedule as all of our other students. Except for our students with disabilities who have been back in our buildings. Coming on Tuesdays and Thursdays and there, those students are our self-contained students in our, um, low incidence classrooms. So the parents should know who your students are in those classrooms. Otherwise they follow the same, uh, schedule as all of the other students.
Uh, very good, Mrs. Pillitz.
There was another question for Brooke. Um, that came in, in, sorry, Mr. Hanky. Um, the, the chat, um, questions are coming in pretty quickly. In terms of special ed days. It says special ed students are now on Tuesdays and Thursdays. Will those days, I guess, change with the hybrid model?
Right, so, um. Because all the students have, have a different IP and different schedules. So it pertains to our students who have been attending in person. Um, on Tuesdays and Thursdays. Those students, their days will increase to four days a week. So their schedule will be a Monday, Tuesday. Thursday, Friday. So they will still have Workshop Wednesday, just like all of the other students. They will not be in the building on Wednesdays. But they will have four days of in, in-person learning.
Thank you.
Um, very good. Um, spacing in the classroom and, and Mr. Saluki can chime in too. Uh, currently. According to. Um, local, state and federal guidelines, uh, spacing is between three and six feet. With mask. Uh, and, uh, that's what we will have in the classroom. During the, uh, lunch periods, we understand that the, the children will not be wearing masks, but they will take them off, eat and then immediately put them back on. We believe in, 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 according to, I, I guess, I can speak to kind of the, the quarantine and also, uh, if there is an infection. We will be working closely with the Cuyahoga County Board of Health to determine who is a close contact. Uh, to a student, uh, students that are more than six feet apart are not considered that. Uh, actually, Mr. Patton, do you want to, uh, kind of expand on my thoughts there?
So i- in regards to the, the, when we're eating the breakfast time? Yeah, so the, and, and lunch, again, the only time that students that will have their mask off are when they're eating. We've also been working with Mr. Saluka, um, and having, um, the ionization, um, in all our buildings put in. Uh, we also know that when students are eating their breakfast as well, the, and lunch, uh, we will, um, also have windows open so to help. Keep, continue the airflow as best as possible from there. Um, we know that the, this is a short period of time. Uh, but we've also seen that other school districts have successfully continued to provide lunch for students throughout the entire school day. And again, based on the information that we have from outside other districts. The, the, uh, infection rate is very low based on students coming back into the schools. Um, and so again, uh, the short period of time for them having, uh, their lunch and breakfast. Uh, we think we can successfully do this as they come back into the school buildings.
I- i- if I could follow up on that, Mr. Patton. As, as with the elementary, um, the students will be, um, eating. Breakfast and lunch at their own desks. And these desks are cleaned nightly. By the staff thorough cleaning. And then, um, on the asynchronous day on Wednesday. The thorough cleaning is done of all the classrooms for the new group of students coming in. As far as the high school. We will be wiping down desks. Thoroughly and spraying them down with the neutrostatic sprayers after every lunch period. And also we will have procedures in place that if a student is changing classes. The idea is to spray and wipe down their desk before they leave. For the next student to come in and have their, uh. Uh, a clean desk. And that, uh, if you don't mind, Mr. Hanky, if I could lead into the ionization that we put into our buildings, um, units, just to. Reiterate what Mr. Patton said. We have installed ionization units in each of our buildings. Um, we're still waiting for the final units to be in place and they will be coming shortly. These units clean the air as it blows through our air handlers. It's been a proven technology and we have the statistics to, to show that it not only kills COVID, but all the other bacteria. Um, and everything that we've learned, airflow is the key. Airflow is the key, windows open, ionization. And, uh, so we think that, that by doing this and putting these in all of our buildings and all of our, um, airflow, uh, areas that, uh. We have taken the, uh, measures to combat as best as we can. Um, any air airborne pathogen that, that may be there.
Uh, thank you. Um, Mrs. Rysland, uh. Well, now I guess it's a question for all of us. I mean, we may be able to be able to all answer. How many students per classroom? Uh, that's going to depend on the classroom, I believe. And, uh, uh, but we are trying to keep it. I believe it's pretty much capped at fifteen or less. Uh, but also there are some outliers, uh, and there are some smaller ones. It also depends on the size of the room. So for example, a, a, a gym class, uh. That's in the gymnasium is, is much easier to social distance than a regular classroom. And then there's some classrooms. Uh, in some buildings that are smaller and we have looked at those and so have the principals in terms of how many students can fit in. Does that make some sense, Mrs. Raisel? Yeah, very good.
Um, can I re-say one more thing, Mr. Hanky? Uh, we've also continued to work with the building principals by doing several walkthroughs to ensure safety as well as the protocols. Of welcoming students in the buildings. Um, we will continue to work with our building principals to ensure, uh, that procedures are in place. Um, in, ensuring that, you know, the, the, as much, uh, distance as, as well as, uh, following through the, uh, procedures. It goes back to the social emotional learning that we continue to do as well as our PBIS. Um, as a district, we continue to work and support our students and we will continue to do that as we welcome them back into the buildings as well.
Well, that, that's a good point, Mr. Patton. This, this is going to be an exciting time for the students and we, we think that, um. Uh, our PBIS program is going to, uh, have a level of positivity to it. So. We're able to welcome them back and, and really promote positive behavior. And that's, and, and Mr. Patton's meeting with all, all the different buildings to talk about, uh, how we incorporate, uh, uh, various, um. Uh, but you know, measures that we have for COVID in terms of mask wearing and, and social distancing and, and hand washing. In, into our PBIS program. Um. I'm trying to look here, see.
I have multiple things.
Go, go ahead, Mrs. Raisel.
Um, so I saw a couple more questions. Oh, sorry. If you want to enroll in BDA, there is a link up on our website. It's right on the front page. There's also a link on our other social, social media channels. So you can just fill it out there. It's a Google survey. It's quick and easy. Go ahead and fill that out. Um, the transition in, this is going to start on January twenty-fifth. January twenty-fifth is the first day of the third quarter. So it's perfect timing. We are going to start with the kindergarten, first and second grade students. So they will be the only students who come in the week of January twenty-fifth. And when you get your cohort information, you'll know if you send them on Monday, Tuesday. Or Thursday, Friday. But that's the only group of kids. We're going to start nice and slow to allow for a nice, easy, slow transition. The week of February first, the following Monday, we're going to tack on another group of kids. It'll be grades three. Four and five in the elementary school and then the middle school students. So six, seven and eight. So Monday, January twenty-fifth, K one and two. Monday, February first, it'll be K through eight. And the next week. Monday, February eighth will be high school kids. So it will be a three-week transition in. And, um, we've done that for a variety of reasons, mostly just to kind of set everybody up for success because as Mr. Patton just said. You know, the kids haven't been in school for a really long time and when they come back together, they're going to be really excited. So we've got to teach them sort of how to do school. And spend some time doing that. So that's why we're going to do a nice, slow transition in. Everybody else just keeps doing what they're doing right now. Um, I also saw a couple of questions about like high school schedules. High school schedules, they're being worked on right now along with that cohort information. They're going to drop those in the mail next week. Um, students who have. Early dismissal, some kids have a high school schedule where they just go one to seven and eighth period is, uh, you know, an early dismissal period. You will be required to leave the building at that time. There will be nowhere to kind of hang out to wait for your friends to walk home or anything like that. And the same thing for later arrival. If you have a first period study hall, we often let the kids just come later. If you want to keep doing that, then you need to just come for second period. There will be no cafeteria, um, hang. And I feel like there was one other thing. Oh, um, so switching classes. The students at the high school and the middle school will switch classes. So the teachers will stay in their rooms and the kids will come to them. Students K through five, which K to threes don't switch anyway, four and five, they're going to stay in their rooms. The teachers will go to them. So four and five, stay in the room and the teachers travel. Six through twelve, kids travel.
Um, Mrs. Raisel, can you, are you able to speak to, uh, we've had a number of questions about freshman orientation or, or transition?
Yeah. So we have been talking about this at great length because, um, you know, even the sixth graders, they've never been in the middle school. And the ninth graders have never been in the high school. And we are looking at dates to go ahead and make them, um, like a little orientation day. We're just trying to figure out the details right now. So definitely stay tuned to the website if you are a parent or a child in that grade level. And we'll let you know, um, when you can kind of come in, take a building tour. We're just trying to, um, set it up as safely as possible. But we are in complete agreement that that would be very beneficial.
I, I did see a question. I'm, I'm monitoring both chats as Mrs. Hamilton is, uh, Mrs. Pillitz, uh. For BDA learning, uh, and related services, can you speak to that?
So, um, if your child is in the BDA, then, um, related services such as speech and OT. Um, have been provided, uh, through teletherapy. So I'm not sure what the question is, Mr. Hanky. Um, if our students are remote, they have been receiving their services, um, through teletherapy.
I, I, the way I read it is I think that, um. I- i- if, if there's any difference, you know, and I, it doesn't sound like there is. It would be the same type of service that they're receiving now. Is that correct?
Correct. So the students in the BDA would continue what they're currently doing. And then when our students that return to our buildings and have related services on their IEP, then those will be in person.
Um, Brooke, can you also speak to if a child, uh, receiving those special support services is, is enrolled in the BDA? Will they also have the option to be able to schedule time to come on site to receive those services in person? For example, perhaps occupational therapy, ABA, or any of those other supportive services?
Right. At this time, um, there's nothing scheduled to have a hybrid schedule for as far as related services go. We have not looked at that. Um, right now, I'm keeping the services. I think it's in the best interest for students to, um, stay. In teletherapy that are in the BDA until we can make sure our space and our students and attendance and. Um, class sizes and everything have been worked out. So if a parent has a question or if that's a concern or an interest, you can please, um. Please reach out to me directly and we can talk about it and, and see what we can come up with. But there is no plan for that, Ms. Hamilton, at this time.
Um. Band and choir at the high school and middle school. Very good question. How will that look and work? Um. The, the, uh, um. The, the band and choir, I believe, Mrs. Raisel, is being worked out. Uh, for the hybrid model. Uh, we have to follow the guidelines in terms of spacing. And, um, the amount of singing and playing that can be done at one time. Is that correct?
Yes. And they'll also be, um. Split in half. So the whole band won't be together on the hybrid schedule.
Okay. Um. Mrs. Hamilton, you, I, I don't know if I've lost, uh. The, the amount of kid, uh, let's see here, um.
Um. I think in terms of the, just alleviating the fears around freshmen not necessarily having their traditional orientation and, um, what they should do in order to make sure that if their child is a freshman at the high school, that they know where to report to. So I assumed there will be communication, um, to Ms. Raisel's point that will be sent out informing all the families of which cohort and which days their, um, children are assigned as well as instructions around their schedule. And if you have any questions, again, you can reach out to Ms. Raisel regarding that. Also, um, in regards to after-school activities at the middle school, will those still take place?
Yes, uh, uh, the same. Sports and other activities that are taking place now will continue to take place. Uh, and Mr. Patton, can you, uh, just, just to reiterate the, the, the measures we have in place for, uh.
So when students come into their outside activities, their temperatures are checked. Um, if any student that does have a temperature, they were not permitted into the gym and they will be able to come home to the parent letting them know they weren't able to participate. Currently at this time, since we've brought students back and sports back, we have not had any cases. Um, so we continue to, um, can, you know, when students are part, and the other thing is when students are participating or practicing, they're not allowed to have their, they do not have to have their mask on. But immediately if they're on the sidelines, masks are worn. Um, that it, that it goes for all the sports that we've had. And so far as we've, I have our students participating with other districts in participating in games, those same protocols are in place. Um, again, ensuring that and then, um, students are not able to share water. So they have to bring their own water bottles. And then consistently hand sanitize or hand washing is in place as well. Um, and so, uh, we continue to follow those guidelines based from the CDC and Department of Health. Uh, to help support our students and our student athletes going forward.
Okay, thank you. Also. Um, another question in terms of like the. The, this is probably for the middle school and high school for students that have like different classes with different teachers. Are the students. For students that have like different classes with different teachers, are the students switching classes? Or are the teachers just switching back and forth between classes?
Yeah, yeah, as Mrs. Rysland said, at the middle and high school, students will be switching classes. Once again, to go back, you know, to the amount of students that are in the school. There are many, many fewer, you know, than there would be if we were at full capacity during the. During, during regular time. So we believe we can do so safely. Staff will help and students will. I believe students will help each other in our PBIS program will also help us. Just to reiterate for someone who about temperature checks that just happened to come up again. As Mr. Salukus stated earlier, we will be having temperature checks with thermal scanners and handheld thermometers. If a student does register high and Mr. Saluk, you may have gone over this, but we do have a procedure that's going to be mindful and respectful of the student. Where they, they, people will not see if they, if they, if they do register high. But we will take them for a secondary screening through our health clinics. And then each school has established a quarantine room. And what we mean by that is that we have a room so then parents can come in, pick up their students. One thing I will say, and this hasn't been brought up, but I would like to speak to it. The Cuyahoga County Board of Health has urged school districts to not be. To not, to not be COVID testers. That's their job. That's doctors' jobs. What we're trying to do is keep people safe through making sure if students have symptoms that are consistent with COVID. You know, fever, cough, sore throat, things of that nature. That we do have them either remain home or return home. So that's, there's that piece. Go ahead. I'm sorry.
I was going to say, we were just looking in the chat and I just felt compelled to respond to a comment. Again, we just want to reiterate to everyone to remain respectful in the chat. And know that everyone who's on this call tonight has put in a very extreme effort to make sure that the reopening process is as equitable and safe as possible. Also, understanding that with any type of in-person interaction, there's still a risk. But we are taking the proper measures to ensure that this, we can do this in the safest way. And so I say that because, you know, we are all human. Many of us on this call are parents. It's also important to understand that Mr. Anki, as the superintendent, has consulted with a group of us. We have a COVID nineteen task force that we reconvene with regularly. We have practices in place where we're having discussions with other entering suburbs. Constant communication with the Cuyahoga County Board of Health and our healthcare partners at Marymount Hospital. We are covering all bases with information. So these are not decisions that are being made just on personal preference, but with lot of thought, with lot of intent. And with lot of data that is informing our decision making. And also taking a look at what best practices that those other districts that surround, that are in the entering suburb network are doing in terms of their phase and process. So I just wanted to say that because it's not just a point of Mr. Anki making a decision that's impacting everyone in the district. This is a collaborative effort from our COVID task force, our equity task force. So we are meeting to share these conversations. Also, parents have had options and so whether you choose to enroll your kid to the BDA or hybrid, you have to weigh the risk. To Mr. Anki's point at the start of this conversation, we are working together to make sure that, keeping in alignment with what we've done to assess the equity needs to make sure that all students can be supported once we start back and resume school with this hybrid model. So I just wanted to take the time to address that comment that came in through the YouTube.
Thank you, Mrs. Hamilton. And I appreciate, you know, you addressing that. On a more positive note, I would, I would like to point out that the vast majority of all of the comments have been very good. And they've, they've been helpful to us as we, as we try to move forward with things. Certainly, as, as, as Mrs. Hamilton said, these decisions aren't made in a vacuum. And we have consulted with many folks. And I, you know, I think that, you know, that, that all of the things that we've put in place, we believe we can. We can move forward and do things safely. Would like to say, just in terms of communication, we're, we're looking to put out more information via the website and social media tomorrow. In terms of what Mrs. Rysland was talking about with structure and things of that nature. And we're looking at a tip sheet. That makes sense, Mrs. Rysland. Hopefully I'm not talking about the school, which I try not to do. We also are putting together a tip sheet and kind of a frequently asked question sheet for parents. And I hope to get that out tomorrow. Also, you know, we are looking, looking at. You're right. Excuse me. I'll be making it, you know, my normal weekly video, which will have some of these things. Real quick, as it's come up a couple of times about masks and as Mr. Salukus stated earlier. We encourage everyone to come with their masks, please. Please, please, students, bring your own masks. However, we will have masks available for students that do not bring them. If it does become an issue because, you know, we want to reserve our PPE, our personal protective equipment for those that are, that need it. We will communicate home with parents to try to work something out. If there's a mask issue where students cannot or are unable to secure masks from home. If that makes some sense, Mr. Saluk. I'm trying to think of what else. I know moving forward, there's going to be a lot of questions and I understand that this is a change. However, I think this is going to be a positive thing for our students and something that's going to help our students move forward. And I'll kind of get off my soapbox a little bit there. Mrs. Hamilton, do you see some other questions coming in?
Yes, one parent says that their daughter came in as a transfer student last year. And is it too late to consider, I guess, enrollment in the Career Center? I'm assuming they're talking about Cuyahoga Valley Career Center. Is it too late for enrollment for that, for this, for this semester? Or how would that process work?
Yeah, I see that she's said she received information. She may be in the, you know, previous grade level because of, because of the transfer. If she's in eleventh grade and taking eleventh grade classes, then CBCC is, she wouldn't join that this year. But she could certainly look into it for next year. And sometimes what happens is you have seniors, but it's a two-year program. So the senior would actually enroll in the junior program and then take the other half of the program as a graduate. You can do that.
Okay, very good. Want to also be mindful of folks' time, but do we see anything else, Mrs. Hamilton? That we have not looked at? And this will also be available again. This will be available on my YouTube page as a video, so you can refer back to it. Mrs. Hamilton, anything else that's come across?
Okay, I'm just taking a look at it. Some were questioning as to whether or not, you know, why not wait until the teacher vaccinations are to come out? And we all know, you know, and staying abreast with the news that there, we don't control the rollout of the vaccination. So we know that things are changing and I think it's important for families in the district to, to also remember that we need to be adaptable during this time. We need to have grace and understanding and knowing that this process is a framework that's being rolled out. But we know that there might be things that may have been an oversight and we're going to make sure that we work through those things. And just continuing to, to follow what we've outlined in our equity rubric and to make sure that our families are supported. However, as a parent, it is your responsibility that if you're having any issues to make it known to the district by reaching out to your principals. Your principals of your building can be a huge resource in helping to navigate and ask some of the questions as you post in the chat. Also remembering that Ms. Gina Wilson, our district's family and civic engagement coordinator, is available to help support. Not just with things concerning the hybrid and reentry, but also with any other support and resources that you have, that you might need as, as families in the district. So we want to make sure that you feel supported through this, through this process. Again, I do see some comments about what other districts are doing. Again, it, we are taking the measures that we feel are most appropriate with the resources that we have allocated in our district. And we are hopeful that things will, will go well with this reopening process. I don't see any, I don't see anything else. There were just some comments about vaccinations and, of course, the 1B category for teachers. Teachers will have the option as to whether or not they choose to go forward with receiving the vaccination as well.
Yeah, that vaccine, first of all. We, I spoke to folks at Marymount Hospital who I partner with and they're part of the Cleveland Clinic Network. The Cleveland Clinic Network is not requiring vaccine to their, for their employees. There's a number of reasons for that and, you know, it just kind of lays where it lays. We are not either. And parents, it is certainly your, your, your choice. But I will say this is, 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 as a superintendent and also as a former history teacher. Vaccines do work. This vaccine has, according to our, our partners at Marymount, is very safe. It is encouraged. You get it. This is a little anecdote. My father was just talking to me yesterday and he was reminding me of when he got his polio vaccine. I remember polio was something that could make you, make it so you couldn't walk and it really saved a lot of people. I think a lot of good work has been done for the vaccine. However, I can, I can just encourage, I do encourage people to keep an open mind about vaccine. And do, and do some research through the CDC and the hot Department of Health on it. But we do believe that that's, it's going to be helpful to end the pandemic.
Okay, Mr. Anki, I do have some closing thoughts, but I wanted to give you and your team the opportunity to have any closing comments before sharing as we close out.
I really personally like to thank not only everyone on this call, but all of. The folks who have over these months been able to continue to provide education to our students, all of our teachers. All of our classified employees, from the folks who make food to those that, that are continually servicing our buildings. And, and, and keeping them clean. To, to our administrators on my team at the central office that have done some, a deep dive on planning to, to try to bring a very safe return to school and also our principals and administrators there. And I really appreciate all of you and I certainly appreciate all the parents. You know, I believe there's, let me, let me look at this thing and there's a hundred and seventy-three of you watching. There was about a hundred and eighty at one point. We appreciate all of you and all of, all of the comments, the vast majority of which were very appropriate and very timely. And Mrs. Hamilton, I'll segue to you then.
Okay, so again, just to close out and being, keeping with time, if you have any other questions or concerns, again, feel free to reach out to your, your building principal. And I wanted to leave with this quote as we are, you know, with the events that have happened since our kids have been out of school. From George Floyd all the way up till last week of the whole incident at the Capitol. I thought it would be fitting to share a quote by Dr. Martin Luther King since we are entering into the observance of Martin Luther King Day on Monday. And that you understand that we are making efforts in the district to roll out professional development and training to help equip our teachers with having some tools to navigate those difficult conversations. And to begin practicing as a district to create space for those type of conversations with our students. And so there might be some things that your students discuss with you as a result of this. And we ask you to also keep those conversations going at home. We are looking forward to just really driving some equitable practices. We encourage you to stay tuned for further updates. And the quote says, "We must come to see that at the end, we seek in a society at peace with itself, a society that can live within its conscience." So again, if we just kind of ponder on those words and knowing that the ultimate goal is peace and having a peace in our conscience about the decisions that we're making. Knowing that our priority for your students is that educational equity. And that the team at the district is really working to ensure that your students can actualize their full learning potential. So with that being said, we just encourage you to reflect on the life and legacy that Martin Luther King left for us as a model. And we encourage you to also, you know, take some time to have those discussions with your families. So again, thank you all for tuning in this evening and have a good night.
Thank you. Thanks. Mrs. Miller, if you could.